Meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order. I now move that this meeting convene in an executive session pursuant to Article 7, Sections 105(c)(D) and F of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations, and litigation. May I have a second? All right, we are in executive session. The Board will reconvene in public session following this executive session. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees' website at www.cuny.edu/live. On March 3rd, 2025, the Board of Trustees convened the Staten Island Borough hearing at the College of Staten Island. Twenty people registered to testify, and two speakers withdrew their request to speak. Thirteen people presented testimony in person. Ten people submitted written testimony in person, and three people submitted testimony electronically. Speakers included professors across a range of departments, current students, alumni, graduate students, and leaders from organizations across Staten Island and the college. Many speakers thanked the Board for their support and spoke about the effects of the Board's continuing support. A speaker representing the Staten Island Ballet lauded the four theaters in the Center for the Arts Complex and emphasized its importance in serving both the public and student body. A professor from the Department of Physics and Astronomy spoke about the CSI Astrophysical Observatory, which will soon open to public viewing and international research projects, including a project in collaboration with the Vera Rubin Observatory in Chile. Several speakers highlighted the Center for Career and Professional Development. They praised the Center's services to help build strong resumes, improve interview skills, prepare interview answers, and build confidence. One speaker highlighted the Center's partnership with J.C. Penney for a suit-up event allowing students to receive discounts on business attire, enabling students to feel confident during interviews. Several professors shared former students who placed in competitive jobs in the industries including Meta, Amazon, Amex, Citigroup, the Library of Congress, and historic Richmond Town. Professors across multiple disciplines expressed concern regarding recent federal policy changes and urged the Board to continue protecting education, research, inclusion, and civil rights on campuses. Speakers called on the Board to share how the university will protect students and colleagues against recent policy changes. One professor also admonished the university for removal of a job posting at Hunter College. A student speaker highlighted the need for transportation improvements given the loss of the loop and ferry shuttle services. The speaker stated students are working to overcome transportation barriers to attend classes and highlighted the heightened impact on students and accessibility needs. One speaker highlighted experience difficulty with CUNY buy procurement system and orders arriving late, which hindered the number of events they were able to hold on campus. On April 7th, 2025, the Board of Trustees convened the Brooklyn Borough and Public Carrying at the New York City College of Technology. Forty-one persons registered to testify, and 26 people presented testimony in person. Six people submitted written testimony in person, and 70 people submitted testimony electronically. Speakers included professors from a range of colleges and departments, members of the PSC, current undergraduate and graduate students, alumni, and staff members. An overwhelming majority of received testimony concerned the implementation of the recently approved PSC-CUNY collective bargaining agreement, specifically when PSC members would receive their retroactive pay signing bonuses and salary increases as negotiated in the contract. Members voiced their growing frustration over the delay in processing the ratified contract, citing the economic impact the delays had on their lives. Professors and students talked about concerns regarding recent federal actions. Speakers testified about the concerns surrounding academic freedom, surveillance, censorship, the defunding of universities, attacks on immigration students, on immigrant students and staff. They also called on the university to disclose information about its investments and urged divestment from certain investments. Further, speakers urged the administration to drop felony charges against eight protesters. Finally, speakers called for the university to take a strong stance to protect faculty, students, and staff. Several students spoke about the university's name policies. Students urged the administration to adopt a policy that allows preferred names, which are not legal name changes, to appear on official documents. Students highlighted that obtaining a legal name change is a lengthy costly process that can endanger the existing legal documentation. Finally, a speaker from Medgar Evers testified about the loss of higher education officer positions from 2019 through 2024, which is leaving the remaining HEO workforce overloaded. He also testified about the difficulties with reclassification and claimed their administration is unaware of the type of work HEOs do. Librarians from Medgar Evers testified about the ongoing mold problem in their library. They asked the administration to publish the results from a June 2024 mold remediation study and professionally evaluate whether there are still ongoing mold hazards in the library. They testified that colleagues in the library department currently suffer from health complications that are symptomatic of mold exposure. I would like to now turn to the professional staff Congress President, James Davis, who has made a request to address the Board Article 2.4(c)(D) of the PSC-CUNY collective bargaining agreement to discuss the implementation timeframe for the PSC raises, retro pay, and ratification bonus. Mr. Davis?
Good afternoon, Chairman Thompson, Chancellor, trustees, and colleagues. It's very good to be with you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. This is only the second time that I've requested an audience with the Board during my four years as PSC President. And I requested it today because my members are frankly very exasperated. We worked really hard to get to an agreement in December, and it was a good agreement. And our members clearly felt good about it. They voted overwhelmingly, 90%, in favor of ratifying the collective bargaining agreement. And that was back in the middle of January. And now it's mid-April, and it's spring break, and my members are really fed up. A lot of them are here in the room, many of them gathered outside today to express their frustration. I get emails, my colleagues in the Executive Council get emails almost every day. The delays in our raises, our retro, our ratification bonus are outrageous, unconscionable, unacceptable, right? And I think that you need to understand that because if there are additional resources that are needed, if there's additional urgency that's needed to get this across the finish line and get an implementation schedule, we need to make that happen. You need to make that happen. We understand fully that we are a complicated bureaucracy. We have the state comptroller, we have the city comptroller, we have a complicated bargaining unit and a complex contract. There's always an interval before we get any contractual raises. But we don't even have an implementation schedule yet. That's really unacceptable. So I just want to convey to you all, this needs to be an all-hands-on-deck moment. We need communication from the administration about when implementation will happen. We're missing at this point 6.1% in contractually negotiated raises. It's not a small amount of money. It means a lot to our members. If you make $80,000 a year and you are foregoing that 6.1% compounded raise, and you're also foregoing the $3,000 ratification bonus, that's eight grand. That's part of a tuition payment for your kid's college tuition. That's a car payment, that's rent, that's payment for elder care or childcare. And our members don't know even when that is coming. So it's really critical. We worked hard together during the negotiations. It's not easy to live in or near where we work. We need you to understand the urgency that the members of the PSC feel about this. The world outside us is very chaotic. People feel deeply insecure about the economy, about the possibility of a recession, about the possibility of inflation. All of this underscores the role that the administration has now to create some degree of stability, right, by making that communication with the faculty and staff out of respect for their dedication, their talent, their skill, and frankly, at this point, their patience. So thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening.
No, no, thank you, President Davis. And normally, we, you know, appreciate your testimony and continue with the meeting. At this point, however, I'm going to ask the Chancellor at least to respond a bit and provide information.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you, President Davis, for being here with us today. And let me just begin by saying that nobody works harder to try to get to the great members of our university, our employees, our faculty, our staff, the resources that they deserve, right? And we're also quite proud also of the agreement that we reached. So that is our commitment, that has been our north star since we have, you know, worked in this, in this process. But again, out of respect too, I think that we need to talk about apples to apples and things are comparable, right? A, this collective bargaining agreement first, you mentioned it would ratify in January, but because we listened to the PSC, right, it took until the middle of February to finish some things at the request of your leadership, right, about the eligibility date for the ratification bonus to be moved to include March 6th, so we include more members, right? So we were listening to the leadership when we were doing that. That caused a delay, right? So we're talking about the end of February, beginning of March, so we're talking about a month and a half, not two, three months, as you indicated. This is also not similar to the contract that we did the last round. This has retro pay that has to be nuanced in terms of who was at this time here and be able to sort of backtrack all that so that we can have precise payments. It has also a ratification bonus, which is prorated, so it's not just sending a blank check. That means that you have to go back and identify who was here and for how long. And so all those things add a layer of complexity that we didn't have with the DC-37 contract or with the prior contract, right? I don't want to say that as excuses, but they are contextual and they provide the information as to why it's taken us longer to provide the information that needs to go to the state comptroller. We're very fortunate to have a great partner in Comptroller Denapoli, which I know that you've spoken to, in terms of prioritizing what we're doing. We've given them the implementation memo, we're working with them, engaging them, all the different files and all the things that they need. These are high priority for us, but it's also one that has some complexity. And I want to make sure that people understand that and that when we do comparisons that we have apples to apples. And but you have our word that we are on it. Our CEO, Batista, and the team is working very, very hard with the comptroller in making sure that all the technical things are done, and hopefully we'll have an implementation schedule that is firm, because we don't want to give something that then creates expectations that cannot be met by forces that we do not control, that would not be to anybody's benefit. But you have that commitment from our part.
Can I respond?
We try not to get into a back-and-forth. A final comment, and then yes.
Yeah, I mean, thank you, Chancellor. I do think it's important to compare apples to apples. I don't, I don't accept that this was delays caused by the need, you know, to listen to the union. I think a lot of things could and should have been lined up. I appreciate that we needed to include the adjuncts who were not technically on payroll in between semesters when we ratified to do that. But that's one piece of a much larger puzzle, and this really needed to have been resolved so that my members could know by now. I mean, we didn't have a ratification bonus in the last contract. The last time we had one was back in 2016, we ratified, right? And it took seven months to get paid then, but that was after the Bloomberg administration let 150-some public sector contracts line up, and there was a bottleneck, right? So there was a reason then why it took so long to get our contracts through the queue. So my hope at this point is that we'll hear expeditiously from your administration about when we can expect both the retro and the raises.
Thank you, President Davis.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. I appreciate that.
What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's appalling? Chills and stalling! What's outrageous? Still no raises! What's outrageous? Still no raises!
Got a voice, let me tell you. Okay? Trustees have been very busy since we last met in February. Trustees Palacio, Cortez Vázquez, O'Donnell Tormi, and Vice Chair Wilken participated in a panel discussion regarding leadership in empowering women professionals, which coincided with CUNY Women's Conference Week. The show also aired as a standalone special on CUNY TV. We have stars here. It was a very powerful show. Trustee Palacio also gave greetings at the Women's Conference, as did trustee Cortez Vázquez. Vice Chair Wilken and trustee Redden attended the CUNY SUNY Student Model Senate. Trustee Berger toured the CUNY Medical School. And finally, vice chair Wilken and trustees Vivolo, Palacio, Berger, and Cortez Vázquez are participating in a series of meetings with the middle state accreditors at various colleges. I would also like to make note and send the condolences from this Board. Our colleague Myra Linares Garcia, lost her mom, Evelyn. I know that some of us are going to be attending, and the information is out there, at least about the wake and the funeral, but I know that we all would like to convey our condolences to her and to her dad, Guillermo. They are both and have been friends for a long, long time. And, you know, as they said, it is, as one who has lost their mom, it is a tough thing. So I would like to convey my personal condolences and also the condolences of this Board, and I know we all share in that. With that, Chancellor?
Thank you, Chair Thompson, and welcome to everybody. I join the Chair in expressing our condolences to trustee Linares Garcia, dear, dear friend, and, you know, from everybody in the Chancellery, and all the presidents of these and their teams also, and to our great friend and really higher ed partner, Dr., and proud CUNY alum. And dear Muli Naris, so a sad, sad moment, and we are the entire family. It's been a challenging week for the Dominican community in New York also with the tragedy and the club.
And all the condolences.
So we also, I mean, I want to echo those things. I know many people here in New York and friends and relatives that were lost there too, so, well, time to move on from that, from that somber note. But spring is in full swing, and we began to get a little taste of that today with the weather, finally. And our schools are on break this week, and it's also an important time of religious holidays. So I am referring to Passover, which started on Saturday, Easter, which is coming on Sunday. My best wishes to all who are celebrating, and of course, many members of our community who are Muslim celebrated Eid al-Fitr a week, a few weeks ago, making the end of the holy month of Ramadan. Let me have a lot of ground to cover, so I'm going to jump to a few things. First, I want to give congratulations to the CUNY School of Medicine, which recently celebrated 100% match rate for students into residency programs, outperforming, outperforming the national match rate by more than six points. This great news capped off the school's first match day since we announced its transition to a freestanding medical school. The school is producing the doctors that New York needs and working to eliminate health, care disparities, and we're excited to see them build on their accomplishments of excellence as they move toward independence. I also want to thank Governor Hochul. She designated April as Financial Aid Awareness Month in New York State, which is an important time to ensure all students are filling out their FAFSA and TAP applications and are not leaving any money on the table. At Somo's last month, Governor Hochul also announced that the CUNY Mexican Studies Institute at Lehman College will receive over $1.5 million to expand their role as a vital resource for students and Mexican and Mexican-American communities in New York. I want to echo my appreciation to the trustees who participated in the CUNY Women's Conference Week, and thank you for all your engagement in the different panels that we had. And I want to thank Dolly Martinez and all the planning team who planned and guided the initiative over the last couple of years. In March, I joined others from the CUNY community for a private tour of the Museum of Jewish Heritage. It was part of our growing partnership with the institution to educate our community members about the Jewish experience and the Holocaust. History teaches us the ways that hatred went on address divides communities, and also that education is the best tool to combat antisemitism and hate. Many thanks to the museum's leadership team and the staff for hosting us, and to the CUNY Cultural Corps team that organized the event. The 100th birthday of civil rights icon Magar Evers will be on July 2nd of this year, and last week I attended an event called Daughters of the Legacy at Magar Evers College in collaboration with the paid internship program, Brooklyn Recovery Corps. It was a conversation between Rena Evers Everett, the daughter of Magar Evers, and a true friend of the university, and a daughter also of Merely Evers Williams, and also the daughter participating in the conversation, Eliashia Shabazz, the daughter of Malcolm X and Betty Shabazz. Magar Evers College was founded as a response to advocacy from within the Brooklyn community, and it was very powerful to spend time on campus and hear these two social justice activists share their experiences with the students and the community. Helping our students improve mental health is a top priority because it improves their success in college and beyond. CUNY is working to improve access to programs and resources that support student mental health. We have recently contracted with an online mental health service called Together All, which provides all students at no cost mental health support, resources, and a connection to our counseling centers. The great value of this, of this kinds of student support was addressed at our recent summit, which took place on April 2nd at John Jay. It was co-sponsored by the STEF Fund, an organization dedicated to the mental, social, and emotional health of students of color. The summit brought together students, faculty, staff, and administrators to share and develop innovative strategies to enhance both students' mental health and academic success. Earlier this month, I attended a panel that was part of the CUNY Immigrant Advocacy Conference, hosted by the CUNY Undocumented and Immigrant Student Programs Office. The purpose of the two-day event was to bring together student researchers, practitioners, and experts to reflect on the current state of undocumented and immigrant students at CUNY, and to present research on the challenges that they face, and to highlight the commitment that we have to that community. Of course, the challenges identified there were heightened by the many changes waiting in our community. We are committed to supporting all members of the CUNY family and to keeping people informed of the latest updates about evolving immigration and other policies. We have reached out to our international students to assure them that our university and colleges' leadership are actively monitoring the evolving situation with some F-1 visas that have been revoked. We are also closely watching changes for undocumented New Yorkers, having advised students with temporary protective status, TPS, to contact CUNY citizenship now for a consultation, and have shared guidance around traveling for foreign nationals with certain visas and other recent policies. Earlier this month, I also attended the Fourth CUNY LGBTQI+ Student Conference at Bronx Community College, which was an opportunity to celebrate our diverse students through workshops, speeches, and fellowship. I also want to conclude by sharing with you that last week I attended a poetry reading event at Queensborough Community College featuring National Poet Laureate Stephanie Pacheco. Stephanie, who's studying writing and literature at BMCC and has also served as poet laureate for New York City and New York State, wrote a poem called Dear CUNY. She has done a fantastic job wrapping up all the ways that CUNY runs its city into one beautiful piece. I'm very excited to share a video with an excerpt, so without further ado, here is an excerpt of Dear CUNY.
Dear CUNY, I don't know of any other school that runs its city like you, that paints its town with its face like you. Everywhere I turn, every building is a student. Every train car is a classroom. Every leader I need already lives in me. Every philosopher I know wears a tote bag and hangs out at my library. My favorite scriptures are those I have to reserve using my school library's website, but at least the only loan I've acquired is at my school library. The only debt I owe is to them, to you all, the magnificent holders of knowledge, you all, who remind me to dream just like our city lights, to be that kind of impossible. This poem is for everything that keeps a boat floating, for the makers and shakers, for the thinkers, the dreamers, for those of us who dare.
And that's it. However, maybe I might remark that with Stephanie. Thank you.
Excellent, well done. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of February 18th, 2025. I'd like to move item number one. They have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Let's now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, the Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair, Henry Berger, to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on March 24th, 2025, which I will now present to the Board. Item 2A is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter into an agreement with the New York City Department of Education for a dual enrollment program in Bronx Community College and approve the waiver of tuition and fees for such program. The university is requesting approval from the Board of Trustees to enter into an agreement with the New York City Department of Education on behalf of the three high schools and to waive tuition and fees for students in a program estimated to be approximately $1.1 million over four years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the Board's consideration.
They have a second for this item.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2B is a similar resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter into an agreement with the New York City Department of Education for a dual enrollment program at Ostos Community College and approve the waiver of tuition and fees related to such program. The university is requesting approval from the Board of Trustees to enter into an agreement with the New York City Department of Education on behalf of Mott Haven Village Preparatory School and to waive tuition and fees for students in the program, estimating, estimated to be approximately $490,000 over four years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2B for the Board's consideration.
They have a second for this item.
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2C is a resolution to authorize an academic excellence fee for the Masters of Science Nursing Education Program at York College. The college is requesting approval from the Board of Trustees to implement the fee beginning with the fall 2025 semester. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2C for the Board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Okay? Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2D is a resolution to authorize a contract with Universal Protection Services LLC to provide security guard services to New York City College of Technology. The university is seeking approval to make expenditures with Universal Protection Services LLC in the amount not to exceed $3,800,000 for a period of three years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2E is a resolution to authorize a contract with Usher? Usher? I'm not sure. Usher? For an online proctor solution. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Usher, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $2 million over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2F is a resolution to authorize the City University of New York to enter into an agreement with ProEducation Solutions LLC for a federal student aid verification solution. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with ProEducation Solutions for an amount not to exceed $4 million over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2G is a resolution to authorize a contract with AIP Publishing for the select journals. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with AIP Journals for an amount not to exceed $928,308 over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2G for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
It's a long alphabet, sir. Item 2H is a resolution to authorize a contract with the Institution of Electrical and Electronics Engineers Incorporated for the IEEE Explored Digital Library. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with the IEEE for an amount not to exceed $1,553,350 over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2H for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2I is a resolution to authorize a contract with Oxford University Press for the Oxford Handbooks Online Collection. The university is seeking approval to make expenditures with Oxford University Press for an amount not to exceed $854,431 for perpetual ownership and access. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2I for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2J is a resolution to authorize a contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc. for purchase of body-worn cameras, video storage software and equipment. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprises for an amount not to exceed $10,836,836 over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2J for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2K is a resolution to approve temporary staffing support for departments working on the replacement of the university-wide finance and human resources system. The university is seeking approval to enter into one or more contracts for a combined amount not to exceed $14,250,000 over the next two years. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2K for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2L is a resolution to authorize a contract with WW Granger, Inc. for maintenance, repair and operating supplies. The university is seeking approval to enter into a contract with Granger under the ENI Consortium for an amount not to exceed $40 million over a period of five years. Mr. Chairman, I present item L for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2M is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The March-April 2025 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between December 16, 2024 and February 10, 2025 and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 26 ECP actions, including nine regular appointments, six interim appointments or extensions of interim appointments, five separations, three classifications and three salary changes. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2M for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 2N through 2X are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the Executive Compensation Plan. I will present them together. If anybody wishes to pull out any individual one, we may consider them separately. So item N is Hunter College. Keshid Navter as interim dean of the School of Health Professions. Item O at Bronx Community College is Robert Diaz as interim executive counsel to the president and labor designee. Item 2P at York College is Fenio Anna Singh Jamison as interim dean of the School of Business and Information Systems. Item Q at York College is Renee Wright as interim dean of Health and Behavioral Sciences. Item R at the Central Office is Carrie Shockley as Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Inclusion Initiatives. Item S at the Borough Manhattan Community College is Joy Tolliver, an extension of an interim assistant vice president and executive legal counsel and labor designee. Item T at CUNY Graduate Center is Jose Noriega as Vice President for Information Technology and Chief Information Officer. Item U at Ostos Community College is Andrea Fabrizio as Dean of Academic Affairs. Item V at Hunter College is Jessica Alvarez, extension of an interim counsel, interim executive counsel and labor designee. Item W at Lehman College is Renee Rotolo as Senior Vice President of Finance and Administration. Item X at the Central Office is Peter Latanzio as Associate Vice Chancellor and University Executive Deputy General Counsel. Mr. Chairman, I present items 2N and 2X for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items?
Second.
Any discussion on them? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Items 2N through 2X have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Short for you today. Thank you.
Very short today.
Thank you so much, Trusty Berger. Item number three, Committee on Education Policy. Let me call on Committee on Education Policy Chair Jill O'Donnell-Tormey. Wow, I'm doing well today. To present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Education Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on March 24, 2025, which I will now present to the board. Policy item 3A1 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Data Analytics at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A2 is a resolution to establish an interdisciplinary program in neuroscience leading to the Bachelor of Science degree at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A3 is a resolution to establish a Master of Science in Finance at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A4 is a resolution by the College of Staten Island to establish a certificate program in medical laboratory science. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A4 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A5 is a resolution by Lehman College to establish an advanced certificate in clinical mental health counseling. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A5 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved.
Policy item 3A6 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in the science of reading at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A6 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A7 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Science degree in early childhood and childhood education at Queens College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A7 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A8 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in teaching students with disabilities, all grades, at Queens College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A8 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A9 is a resolution by Queens College to establish a Master of Science in Education in teaching students with disabilities, all grades. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A9 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3A10 is a resolution to establish a master's program in strategic nonprofit management at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A10 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3B1 is a resolution to amend the bylaws of the Graduate Council of the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3B2 is a resolution to amend the governance plan of the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy item 3C1 is a resolution from City College to rename the CUNY Institute from Municipal Waste Research to Urban Waste Resource Recovery Research Institute. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C1 for the board's consideration. That's a mouthful.
He's for you to say. May I have a second for that? Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That's approved.
Policy item 3D1 is a resolution to appoint Paul Reifenhizer with immediate tenure at Gutman Community College with a waiver of bylaw 6.2. B. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That is approved.
Policy item 3E1 is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3E1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy items 3E2 and 3E3 are resolutions to approve the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard Report for March and April 2025 and January and February 2025, respectively. Mr. Chairman, I present items 3E2 and 3E3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this? Any discussion? Now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Policy items 3F1 through 3F6 are resolutions to award 26 honorary degrees across 14 campuses in the university to recognize the achievements of exceptional private citizens who through their work, their research, their art or their activism have meaningfully contributed to building a better and more just society and thus reflecting the mission of our university. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Through 26, not 6.
Oh, through 26.
Through 26.
Mr. Chairman, I present items 3F1 through 3F26 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that Karen Boykin-Towns is going to get one from Magar Evers. I'm really proud about that. The same thing for Roger Green.
And also Ed York.
Yeah.
Somebody very... Adelaide Sanford.
Yeah.
Which is incredibly touching.
Yeah. End of comments.
Oh. Any other discussion on this? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Trusty. Let's... The Committee, item number four, Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Rain Cortez-Vazquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee for Advancement and External Affairs considered the following matters at its meeting on March 24, which I now present to the board. Policy item 4A was a resolution requesting the approval to name Jennifer B. Greenfield Professor of Cultural Anthropology at Brooklyn College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
The next item is really something we should be very proud of. Policy item 4B is a resolution requesting the approval to name the Dolly Martinez Equity and Empowerment Endowment Scholarship at Eugenio Maria de Ostos Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
May I?
Yeah.
First... Wait. Do you want to...
No, no. You go first.
Clearly thank Dolly Martinez for generosity, and she's been a longtime member of the community and someone who I think exemplifies something that we don't highlight enough, which is how many of our faculty and staff and members contribute philanthropically to the mission of the university. So clearly appreciation to Dolly for generosity, but I think an opportunity to also thank the many members of our community that, you know, support their campuses and their faculty and staff. So a beautiful... in many ways.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I also would like to really congratulate Dolly, her and her family, for this contribution. She's dedicated herself to Ostos for many, many years. But I also love her spirit of generosity, and I'm going to ask some board chairs and board trustees to kind of like look at this as a model for us to really support. So that's the end of my comment. Thank you, Dolly.
Nice. Any other discussion on this item?
Just want to recognize and support as our Chair of Advancement and our Chancellor and the board to the really incredible work that Dolly Martinez has done for CUNY and look forward for that to continue.
Any other comments? Let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Move now to policy item 4C, which is a resolution requesting the approval to name the Eugenia and David Ames... But it's not Eugenia. It's Eugen... Oh, it is. It is Eugenia. But it's the English version of that. And David Ames Endowment Fund at LaGuardia Community College. I present item 4C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
The next is policy item 4C, which is a resolution requesting the approval to name the August and Rose de Cosmio Educational Fund at Lehman College. I present item 4D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
I also present item 4E, which is a resolution requesting the approval to name the Edward Geltman Memorial Prize in Environmental Health Policy at the CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to state that it has been a joy to work on advancement and the kind of progress that we're doing, the thorough work that we're doing in looking at namings and setting up the policies. So I want to just thank our Senior Vice Chancellor... Senior Vice Chancellor Sarah Owen... Sasha Owen for her work and her team on this effort. It's been a real delight. So with that, sir, I conclude...
Whoa.
I know. I know. Surprised.
You okay?
So next time, Sasha, when I say something else.
Thank you, Chair, for your leadership to it.
Right. Okay. And I also... No. What are you doing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That was added.
Before I conclude today, I would like you to note the passing... Oh, yeah. The passing of Dr. Michael Dean at Hunter College, a class of 1973, and former Chair of the Hunter College Foundation. Chair... Vice Chair Wilken and I had the pleasure of working with Dr. Dean and had a very wonderful conversation about the relationships that we should have with foundations. And who will be honored tomorrow at Roosevelt House at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you, trustee.
Okay. With that, it concludes my report. Thank you.
Item number five, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me call in Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Vice Chair Senator Wilken to present and move the following item.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at the meeting on March 24, 2025, which I will now present to the board. Item 5A is a resolution to authorize construction for restroom and office area upgrades to a state of good repair at the academic core building and associated asbestos abatement at York College. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount not to exceed $16,764,122. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5B is a resolution to authorize roof and facade renovations to Shepherd Hall at the City College of New York. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount not to exceed $16,224,130. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5C is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with landlord entities to expand the leased premises and extend the term of the lease at the CUNY School of Professional Studies at 119 West 31st Street, New York, New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5D is a resolution to authorize the upgrade of HVAC infrastructure systems at Thomas Hunter Hall at Hunter College, 932 Lexington Avenue, New York, New York. The board requests CUCF to provide capital funding for the project in an amount not to exceed $35,833,400. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Item number six, Committee on Student Life. Let me call in Committee on Student Life Chair, Michael Arvin-Eadie, to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Student Life considered the following matter at its meeting on March 24, 2025, which I will now present to the board for its approval. Item 6A, the City University of New York, change in earmarking of the university's student senate fee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number seven is a resolution to award a university honorary degree. Anthony E. Meyer. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved. The chancellor has asked the board to consider one additional resolution today. I will ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record. And we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, could you read the resolution?
Item number... My mic off, sorry. Item number eight is a resolution to appoint Dr. Claudia V. Schrader as President of York College dated April 15, 2025, whereas the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York appointed Dr. Claudia Schrader as interim president of York College effective January 8, 2024, and whereas Dr. Schrader has held leadership roles at three colleges at the City University of New York, the university, and has served the university for over 20 years. And whereas Dr. Schrader was the president of Kingsborough Community College, Kingsborough, from 2018 to 2024, where she oversaw the launch of KCC Flex, one of the university's earliest online hybrid degree programs that mix... That... Sorry. That offers adult learners an affordable, flexible way to complete a degree using a mix of online and in-person courses. And whereas Dr. Schrader also shepherded the unveiling of Kingsborough's first satellite location at Chestnut Commons, an affordable housing complex in Brooklyn's Cypress Hills neighborhood, making higher education more accessible to residents of Brooklyn. And whereas Dr. Schrader secured the largest single donation of its kind in Kingsborough's history, a million-dollar gift, establishing the Leonard and Louise Riggio Scholarship Fund, providing two years of full tuition for 100 students, and during her tenure, the college secured $13 million in workforce development funds. And whereas prior to becoming president at Kingsborough Community College, Dr. Schrader served as provost and senior vice president for academic and student success at Bronx Community College, as associate provost at William Patterson University in New Jersey, and as associate provost at Mega Evers College, where she also held a tenured appointment as a professor of education and served as her department's deputy chair. And whereas Dr. Schrader was one of 25 leaders selected for the Aspen Institute's College Excellence Programs, Aspen New Presidents Fellowship, and she has been inducted into the Rutgers African-American Alumni Alliance Hall of Fame. And whereas Dr. Schrader has a BA from Rutgers University and an MED and EDD, all from Teachers College, Columbia University. And whereas a committee chaired by trustee Armenia Palacio led a nationwide search and recommended Dr. Schrader as one of the finalists for the presidency of York College. And whereas after consultation with various York College stakeholders, the chancellor is recommending Dr. Schrader